Okay, we're gonna get started next with the Department of General Services. We're gonna start with a presentation from the agency at this time.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. I see that we get the spot right after lunch, so I'll try to keep it entertaining for you all. My name is Barquiatilla. I am the Director of Department of General Services. But before we got into our slide presentation, I would like to share a few broad themes on the progress we are achieving at the Department of General Services. Clean and safe environments for DGS employees, the workers of our stakeholders, for the city residents with whom we interact. We have completed the installation of water management systems in all three courthouses in the downtown campus, with more to come in additional buildings. In addition, DGS is implementing more focused precautions and protocols for how we work in extreme heat conditions for both our workers and the employees who operate the vehicles we service and work in the buildings we maintain. Clean and healthy communities is one of the mayor's pillars. Safety first is a common refrain. We are making this a priority for us. Planning for the future. To have continued success in the future, we realize we need to partner with the workers of the future, students in Baltimore City Schools. DGS's Fleet Division has created and implemented a curriculum in all three Baltimore City High Schools that offer automotive programs. We currently have five apprentices and three work-study students who are transitioning into full-time positions. We have eight new work-study students starting at the end of June, and we have requested seven youth work students for the summer. Beyond fleet, our facilities team has been working on the plan to write out our facilities portfolio so that we can optimize our city's footprint for the needs of our employees and stakeholders in the years ahead. Our bread and butter, responsible stewardship of city resources. Our Energy Division continues to win the grant funds to make our energy use more efficient across the board, as well as identifying the rebates and billing errors to help the city save precious budget dollars. Our Facilities Division continues to expand PM, preventative maintenance efforts to revitalize our aging infrastructure while gradually reducing the instances of corrective maintenance. Our Capital Projects Division continues to complete much-needed roof replacements at fire stations, HVAC system replacements at libraries, and much more, many with the support of ARPA funds and increased geo bonds and paygo that this budget gives us. And our electric vehicle program continues to progress with the study and the development of infrastructure needed to keep those vehicles charged and procure even more electric vehicles as that charging infrastructure is built out across the city. My office, the DGS's director's office, has prioritized diversity, equity, and inclusion alongside a strong work in HR and fiscal management. As part of our strategic plan, our agency began DEI training with guidance from Lana Asancion Bates of the Mayor's Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Our entire leadership team, which consists of 20-plus, have completed two sessions and plans to attend two more in June and July. Sherri Reed, our DEI committed chairperson, has completed training in ethics, diversity basics, creating and supporting inclusive workplaces, the government accountability for racial equity, training tool, and working on advancing racial equity. The first Women's Summit in March, 50-plus women in DGS, was a success, promoting plans for quarterly events. The agency is also collaborating with the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs for Spanish-language outreach and is focusing recruitment efforts across all council districts. The next hiring event is scheduled for Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at C.C. Jackson Recreation Center in Park Heights, May 31st. We are proud of the recognition members of our teams have received. Just last month, our Deputy Chief of Facilities Operations, Ms. Carol Young, was presented with the Lindensky Award for demonstrating exemplary character, unwavering commitment to public service, and human-centered leadership, traits that extend to our facilities team. Earlier this year, our Human Resources Division was presented with the Controller's Public Innovation and Efficiency PIE Award on the PIE Day. By the way, second year in a row, so two years back-to-back since its implementation, so we're winning, for their accountability and innovation in delivering exemplary execution and leadership in recruitment. And our Fleet Division has been ranked 37th among the 100 best fleets in North America, an annual ranking from the NAFA Fleet Management Association. And we were awarded Public Fleet of the Year by the Greater Washington Region Clean Cities Coalition, a U.S. Department of Energy nationwide partnership program. So, as we begin our budget discussion, I am pleased to report that we're fulfilling our agency goals, which is part of our strategic plan. We've developed our strategic plan two years ago. Now we're extending for another three years because if you do not know where to go, you're lost. And we're really focusing on our aspirations, understanding where we are, and then building the gap by everybody doing what they need to do. And the motto we have, when everybody leads, we succeed. So our goals are, and now I can actually move into our presentation. All right, I'm just gonna test if this is working. It is. Is there a delay? There is it. Okay, all right. Our goals are driving operational success through expertise, innovation, accountability, and effective use of data. Data is in our DNA in DGS. DGS has always been a data-driven agency. We have the ability to be able to track our data because all we do is most of the time working in the work order management systems. We can track our work well. But second thing for us is attracting, training, and retaining talented people so that we can strengthen our excellence, service excellence. Our office has Fleet Management, Administration, Public and Private Energy Performance, which was a part of our Capital Projects and Design and Construction Team, but now it's own standalone office and facilities management. Our mission is to deliver results for our city partners through services and solutions that are timely, cost-effective, and sustainable. I already talked to you about our goals. So I'm gonna jump in with our Fleet Management. Fleet Management is our largest division in our agency. They have about 250 budgeted positions with almost $90 million in fleet operations. This service is responsible for all the way from purchasing, outfitting, fueling, maintaining and decommissioning vehicles and other equipment used by the 29 city agencies. We do have about 5,000 pieces of assets all the way from a golf cart to a Zamboni or a Coast Guard firefighting boat. Like, it's a wide range. This year, we wanted to focus on the two measures before you, but the other measures are before you also in the budget book. But most important thing for us, for the fleet, is to ensure that the vehicles that our sister agencies need to do their services available to them. So main goal is to ensure that the public safety fleet availability is hitting its marks, and then the routine services availability. And routine services is a term that we use with DPW that includes load packers for trash picking up. It is the recycling pickup as well as sweepers. So we track these availability. Our administration service has Director's Office, Media and Communications. We have our HR team. We have our fiscal team. And we have our Office of Performance Management because DGS owns its own internal DGS stats. We only rely on our own accountability before we go before anybody else. We have our own metrics. And I'm proud to say that we're one of the few agencies that our availability numbers gets produced daily, twice a day, 8:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. It goes out to the city's leadership, all the way to the city administrator. And I'm gonna use this word, unadelted. Nobody sees these numbers before they get published. We get to see them as the moment fate sees it. City administrator, I see it. So the numbers are the numbers, but we're proud. We're not trying to hide anything. We wanna be transparent, and then we wanna be data-informed. One thing that I wanna note here that is quite important, although the administrative services do not have metrics assigned to it, that's something that I'm quite proud, that our percentage of invoices paid within 30 days is 95.7% in FY '24. And then this year, we are at 98.3%. How does this happen? As you know, the DGS Fleet is our largest department, division, and then they pay most of our invoices. So it makes only sense by looking at the data. If you wanna inform this number to be better, you need to attack the largest cohort. So our fleet team internally created a software tool to make the process easy for paying the invoices. And then we leaned on our Microsoft Studio, BI Tools, Power Automate, to ensure that every process is improved and then the timing to pay invoices are there. And then we could see the results of this by 98% of invoices paid within 30 days. So we are proud. And we're expecting to grow this to other size of our operations. But compared to fleet, they pay hundreds of invoices a day, and then our HR pays maybe one. So it made sense for us to start with fleet and grow from there. Moving on, Public and Private Energy Performance. This is the group that has taken on the city's entire utility billing and management system. And they are also bringing us grant revenues. That is quite important. We are right now on target to achieve about 5.7 million in grant funds awarded in FY '25 for spending through FY '26, '28. $4.5 million for EV chargers. $1.1 million for city's buildings' energy efficiency projects that is coming from MDE. And $380,000 for medium and heavy-duty vehicles to be purchased. We're working with Department of Transportation to buy an electric bike lane sweeper. And one other asset that I don't remember right now. But the work is not just bringing the grants, but being the custodian of the largest fixed cost of the city, one of the largest fixed costs of the city, the utility billing. And since we have taken over, we have found $300,000 in rebates from energy efficiency projects, $600,000 plus in bill refunds avoided costs since January 2024. Couple of the examples would be, we chased and found $70,000 in state tax refunds, $400,000 in overbilling by the utility, $44,000 that would have charged to the city school but got to us. And whenever an account gets opened, BGU charges a tax. But now that we are inserted ourselves into the middle of energy billing, closing and opening, we ensure that those taxes are not being charged to us. So just at the beginning of this year, we were able to stay off $80,000 in cost avoidance. I am so sorry. I'm not advancing the slides, and nobody's telling me, my team. I'm joking. So one of the biggest things that we wanted to do with the Energy Office is to put our buildings into this international benchmark called Energy Star Portfolio Manager. You all know that if you had purchased appliances, that you have that little sticker that Energy Star. This open-source data allows private and public facilities to be inputted in this benchmarking portfolio that includes federal government buildings, state government buildings, as well as local and private to tell us how well our buildings are doing. That informs us to be able to then make prioritized capital decisions and how do we use our funds. So we have exceeded our target. All the 296 buildings, although our target was 270, has been inputted. We had a grant target revenue rebate for $1 million, but we brought about $5.7 million this year. But I do wanna be cautious here. With everything that is happening in the federal universe, maybe our years, we may not be as lucky. But that doesn't mean that we're not gonna try to bring more monies into this organization. Next up is our facilities management. Unfortunately, is the bottom of the chocolate fountain is always having to respond to the underwhelming capital investment all the years that we have neglected to deal with our deferred maintenance bucket. So what happens if you neglected to change the roof? Then you have to go and then maintain and repair every time. What we care here is our ability to hit the percentage of preventative maintenance completed on time because if you do your PMs, you could then reduce the number of corrective maintenance that you need to do. However, we are stretched so far thin responding to the emergencies, most of our time is still being worked on the percentage of corrective work request. In that, we still would like to be able to respond and complete those work orders on time. Our targets are unfortunately not where we wanna be, but we are being actual about where our abilities are. And we are constantly meeting our targets. And I have my actuals available. If it comes up during the conversation, I'll be able to share with you, but I'm gonna breeze through the last slide. So next one is our Capital Projects Division. This is where we design and construct and study things. Previously, or historically, because of our funding levels, we were never able to be able to build something from ground up. All of our projects were small projects. And you heard in Director Larson's project, operating budgets with the geo bonding increases where we're gonna be able to now do full projects. And we heard this morning Director Ryer talked about the switch in how we do businesses. Alav, DGS is now, rather than fixing one component of one building, now we could be more planned to do full-scope renovations to our buildings. So we're very proud of that increase in our geo bonding. And we're very happy that DGS is getting some share of it so that we can invest back into the buildings that we are in. In our Capital Projects Division, we look at it, obviously customer satisfaction is important. Whenever we finish a project, we would like to see how well did we do it, but also the construction projects that are completed on time. You would see in the budget book there are performance metrics related to number of change orders that have been issued, and then the percentage of change orders is a target that we would like to hit each year. With that, I'm gonna conclude my presentation and be ready for your questions.
Thank you, Director. When I'm looking at Service, 731, Facilities Management, I know that one of the items that you just stated was that you guys are typically out responding to emergencies. And obviously, I could understand the preventative maintenance numbers, but the corrective work requests completed on time, like it just seems like the boss is low. Is that like an industry standard for these percentages?
I hope those are not industry standards because they're very low. That's why I was, I wanted to be realistic with our numbers, what we could do and what we can achieve. We wanted our targets to be close to our actuals, but not below our actuals, but not too far ahead that our actuals does not mean any target. So we wanna set realistic targets based on our data and how well we can interact with them, and each year try to increase. In an environment, Madam Chair, where your buildings are in good conditions, and we track this in a metric called Facilities Conditions Index. In the industry, it goes as FCI, which is a score that an engineer and architectural assessment assigns that number to a building. And our buildings in the spectrum almost on the worst end of the spectrum. What do I mean by that? Facilities Condition Index can, I'll give you an example of it, maybe a car. You look at a Kelly Blue Valley of a car, let's say it's $10,000. And then you take that car to a maintenance shop, and then they tell you you have $8,000 worth of repairs on this car. So that ratio between 8,000 and the value of the car, in this case, 80%, is the FCI of a building. What will be the cost to rebuild this building versus what is extended deferred maintenance backlog? Why am I explaining this? Because the higher that number is, the more extensive renovations that you need to do to that building. If you don't do those extensive renovations, capital improvements, fixing the elevators, HVAC systems, plumbing, you name it, electrical, that, you're gonna have a lot more failure rate. So our numbers, not just the percentage, but the number of corrective maintenance work orders we get per store.
And I just, I wanna interrupt you. I just wanna make sure I understand. You said the higher the number is,
the worse the building could.
The worse the building is.
Yes. Higher the number, because that means that, you know, you have $8,000 worth of repair on a car that is $10,000 worth. So if you have that, you will sell that car. I mean, you're not gonna invest $8,000, right? If you can buy another car for $15,000, but we can't.
So what's the percentage of outbuildings? Like, say we at the 0% to 50% mark, right?
Yes.
Between 50 and 100. Like, what's the percentage of outbuildings that are?
I can, if you give me one second, I can pull that information for you. We have anticipated that this question might come up. If anyone from my team has it in front of them faster than I have, please feel free to introduce yourself first. Nobody? Okay, I'll find it.
While y'all are looking up, looking that information up, I wanna ask another question. For the corrective work requests completed on time, for that metric, what is the average timeline for the corrective work?
Okay, so.
Corrective work orders.
Thank you. That's a good question, and it requires a little bit of explanation. So we have the Arcbus Work Order Management System where we have service liaisons, repairs related to a problem. And it could be my door is not working, my toilet not flushing, or huge flooding happening in the roof. So, Madam Chair, we do have service level agreements for each problem type. So we would like to fix a doorknob in two days, but we would like to fix a roof repair in 45 days. So we track each problem type average in its own right. And the way we calculate, we look at, let's say that we had 10 roof-related work orders happen this month. And all of them are, let's say, completed within the service level agreement 45 days. That means that that is 100% compliant. And at the same time, let's say that we have five doorknob-related issues came, and then the service level agreement for that a day. And we fix them all in two days. That would be 0% compliance. So it's not just like one number that gets to an average. We look at each problem type and look at how well we do on each problem type because otherwise, a roof job that may take 60 days, which is normal, but if you blend the average, then it's gonna make the data that we're looking at a bit of a junk. So what we do is a complex calculation of each unit, how well we do that in that compliance.
Okay, Director, I'm gonna take that one. Did you guys get the answer yet for the? Okay.
Bob La Lima, Assistant Deputy Director for Administration, Department of General Services. I see we have the average for? The average for the portfolio is 51%. So the portfolio has 51% is the average Facilities Condition Index. That's across, I think it's the question you're asking. On average, what's the 51%? I think later, if we can get to, there's a presentation that we prepared earlier that may have more detail. I'll ask my one if you get a chance, if you can find it. But 51% to the answer to your question.
I have the numbers. So our average FCI score for all of our buildings, which we have 153 facilities, about 5 million square foot. We have done all of these FCA Facilities Conditions Assessments done. And we've been doing these since probably 2014 to get to this point. And this includes all of the downtown campus, all of police department facilities, health department libraries, all of the historic buildings from a shot tower to a poehouse to the Bromo Salsa Tower, to fire department facilities and Mayor's Office of Programs. This is about 150 facilities blended need for them, the deferred maintenance backlog. If we were to fix that, if everything wrong in that portfolio, we need to have $1.2 billion of, yes, for the B. And I wanna caution you on this one. This is as is replacement. So it doesn't get into any kind of improvements that this building may need since that it was been built. So we need to have about $1.2 billion to fix everything that needs to be fixed in our buildings. We get about $18 million a year. So this is a very hard job for us to be able to work with our agency partners and prioritize what needs to be fixed. So you can only imagine when we get ARPA funds and when we improve our $80 million general bond obligation to 120, that's almost a 50% increase. Even if we get a slice of that, let's say that we get six additional million dollars, that represents a huge percentage increase for our ability to be able to chip away from this deferred maintenance backlog. But Madam Chair, I hope that it creates a better picture for you to say why we don't wanna be super high on just like, we're gonna meet 98% of our PM. Which is not gonna be able to do, and it's gonna be, we wanna be realistic with our ability, but continues to improve. And you could see our numbers, year over year, we're getting better. And the more we do capital replacement, the better our facilities operations will get, but it's not the other way around. We can't really beat the capital deficiency by overfixing them. It's not the responsiveness, it's the root cause. We need to fix the roof, not keep repairing it. We need to replace it. And for your identification, FCI score, this is an industry standard by BOMA Building Office of some, I can't remember the, but it's the benchmark in the private industry. They say 0% to 5% is normal maintenance. 5% to 29% is limited to moderate renovation. 30% to 50% moderate to extensive renovation. We committed average to it at the 51%. I wanna point that out again. And then after that, 50% to 99% comprehensive moderation. And anything else, condition for demolition. Just like, don't even invest. And I always say this, and I'm gonna say it again. If you're in a private industry, let's take Comcast in Philadelphia and their HQ. It's an asset in their balance sheet. They're not gonna let that asset deteriorate, right? It is their value. But unfortunately, this is not the city of Baltimore's fault. In public space, we don't look at our infrastructure, especially underground where you don't see it. And I was listening to the DPW hearing. They're just like, there are miles and miles needs to be replaced, 100 years old, and we have under-invested in that. But now, unfortunately, they're all coming do all at the same time. Whether that be right-of-way, whether that be underground or vertical, it is deteriorating. And we are fighting the good fight to keep him alive. But the salvation is in two ways. One, we need to reduce our square footage. We cannot live in the days of this is the square footage we need. Because if nothing else, COVID taught us that the way we work and where we work and how we work has changed. And I call this is a madman era. If you look at a couple of our buildings, you go to these corner offices, including mine, we don't need that much space. We don't need a gym.
Director, thank you so much for your thorough explanation. You definitely answered my question, and I appreciate it. I wanna go into a whole, in a different direction with my second question before I get to my colleagues in this regard in electric vehicles.
Yes.
I just wanted an update. I think all of us are looking to see who's ringing camera that is. I wanted to get an update on how many charging stations that DGS has installed to date. And I just wanted to understand the distribution of those charging stations across city facilities.
I, Julia, I'll start, and then you can take on. So the charging stations is where is our focus right now. Councilman Conway knows this. We're trying to hit the bill's mark. And last year, we talked about us doing a study as to where we need to deploy our charging stations. Because as you know, the bill says by 2030, every asset that has an equivalent zero emission vehicle out there then needs to be purchased as such. So in order to hit that mark, so that when we're there, we need to be able to buy, we are focusing on where our charging station needs to be done. So last year, we have partnered with, we did an RFP and partnered with a consultant firm called ICF to do a study of our fleet and telling us where we need to put our charging stations. So, Jason, do you mind coming in? Just please come up. Jason is our Deputy Chief of Energy, and he's the leading person on this project.
Hi, good afternoon. Thanks for asking about the EVs.
So we brought on ICF to walk through a vehicle-to-vehicle analysis, working with all of the agencies in terms of the TELMAX data, how they use vehicles, how they operate, to define then where we're gonna install chargers for the years to come. So as Director Berkey said, we're going to meet that two thousand thirty goal for procuring vehicles in that, starting in two thousand thirty, all vehicles that are procured for late duty have to be electric. So to meet that goal, we're gonna plan out the infrastructure and have that in the ground to charge them ahead of that time. That calls for about five hundred chargers. It's nine hundred eight ports to charge those. It's about eleven hundred vehicles that are relatively easy to transition. They're not take-home or emergency response vehicles. Those are spread through forty-four primary locations, where there are five or more vehicles across agencies. It's a hundred and thirty-two total locations we're looking at installing chargers. The, the big goal this past year and the effort is going after grants then, to help cover costs of that in the years to come. So we secured about five million dollars in funding that we're planning out to pilot locations next year. Those are Rickham Park Headquarters and for DOT Public Safety to work at really installing this first group of chargers. Those will be fully kind of soup-to-nuts designed by the consultant. After that, we need to start working back through other primary locations, but working into making the asset cost, or the EV charger is part of the asset cost for all fleet vehicles, starting in fiscal twenty-seven to cover those, the EV infrastructure.
Jason, I wanna, I wanna add one clarification. We are only responsible for putting charges for the city's assets, not for the public. I just want to be clear on that. And the study have identified of the fifteen hundred administrative vehicles, we have find about, to Jason's point, eleven hundred of them have defined developing locations. Developing locations means that they always park in the same lot. And fifty-one vehicles already have EVs in there, and we would need about nine hundred and eight ports charging stations to be installed to support the infrastructure when the two thousand thirty rolls in.
So I'm just trying to make sure that I understand this. You know, my question was just like, how many do we have? I, I understand that there's a study that's going on, and obviously we need it, but I wanted to know how many are installed right now.
We have about eleven in, in the downtown.
Yeah, there are nine in Ableman and sixteen at our central garage for twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
And we have fifty-one in our fleet, total EVs. And then most of them are in the downtown area, so there are nine, nine charges are helpful. And we're also partnering with the Parking Authority to find a way to be able to, let's say that if a health inspector comes and takes the car out at eight AM and then comes back at four PM, we would like to try to find the ways to democratize that spot between eight and four PM time area where we could get revenue through the Parking Authority and then after four PM and before eight AM.
So we have, we had twenty-five chargers, and then mostly, well, nine of them are pretty much in the downtown area.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I wanna make sure I'm able to get them to, to my other folks who have some questions. Thank you, Director, and thank you, Jason. I appreciate it. Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess first I just wanna start off, thank, and thank you so much for everything that you and your team do for the city. I didn't really start getting into general services until I started having problems at one of the schools that had closed on Greenspring Avenue. And then that's when I just really started learning everything that you do and trying to stay on task with that. And so, thank you for that. And congratulations for your award, which is very important. And so on that note, I wanna, I'm gonna be paying attention to that as we are members of the Maryland Association of Counties and the National Association of Counties. And so we had the Fire Department and Housing win awards through those organizations that we are heavily involved in. So I encourage you to keep that positivity, and I'll, I'll send information on the next go-round with, with that.
We would appreciate that. We're pushing our abstracts for presentations and awards on both associations, Mako and Nako. We're hoping to win again.
Awesome, awesome. So I'm going to, I guess, continue a wonderful question that the councilman of the eleventh district started with planning, and he made a comment, the director made a comment that stuck in my mind. The councilmen had asked, you know, how can the council help? How can we help with projects in our district? What is the process of how we can get involved besides when you come in settings like this? You know, we all have very important capital improvement projects that you are involved in. And the planning director made a comment that we should, you, you should be in contact and working hand-in-hand with the council before the project even starts. And I, is that possible? Can that happen?
It's not only possible, and I think it's the right thing to do. And obviously, there are two phases, right? If you're doing, we, we might need your help. If we're doing something in a community that you are the councilperson, it would be influential to, to ensure that we're doing the right thing by the, by the constituents there. The, the second one is, you could influence the decision-making on what projects DGS will support. But there's one thing that we need to, we need to be understanding here. DGS is usually, are not the owners of these assets in the constituents other than the surplus schools. We do it on behalf of other agencies because we are their contractors. So what happens is, when we get our funding slice from the Department of Planning for any given year, we, even before that, the dollar allocation, my capital team reaches out to the agencies and asks, what is the most important thing, project for them for this fiscal year, and then the following five fiscal years of the CIP? We do that prioritization with them. So one excellent opportunity, that if you are already in conversation with those said agencies, whether that be homeless services or Health Department, that we would like to, to capture that information. But more importantly, under our Assistant Deputy Director Leslie Carter, we have instituted this monthly check-in with each council member. And then those are excellent opportunities to think through what we can do. And if we're not thinking about capital projects to come, or capital projects that are active, that's the most excellent, in my opinion, avenue that is already exists for DGS and the council members to talk about. Within that, we can let you know where we're about to reach out to our agencies to tell what you need. Have you put in your own input? Can we schedule a meeting to talk about capital projects with you and our agencies in it? So we don't get to the full prioritization before we get your input. So, I mean, we are very open. You already know that we already meet with you. Make that an agenda item. If you forget, we'll make it an agenda item for you before we roll into the planning year. I think that's an excellent, excellent improvement on our relationship with you.
Thank you for that. And you do have a wonderful team here.
I do.
Well-mannered and, and just beautiful and handsome. Can you, I don't know if I missed it, but can they introduce themselves?
I would, I would love to introduce them, but there are a few. We rolled in deep. But if I am allowed, Madam Chair, I would like to do a very, very quick, but.
You know what? Whatever my Vice President wants, that's what she's gonna get.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna introduce them, so I'm gonna go towards my right with my deputy, and then we're gonna go around the room.
So, hello, Deputy Director Terrell Chastain.
Catherine Burns, Chief of HR.
Pi Award winner.
King Bennett, Chief Facilities.
Baba La Lima, Assistant Deputy Director for Administration.
And stop right there a minute. Lima started with me when I first started on the council, and we were the only two people. He helped me tremendously until I hired my staff.
Now he's helping me.
Yes. So I just had to give a shout-out.
Thank you for training.
Because I have not seen him in a long time, and you have a very good person there.
I am fully aware.
Leslie Carter, Assistant Deputy Director of External Legislative Affairs.
Kendo Abu Hakim, Assistant Deputy Director of Operations.
Oh, by the way, second Lindenski Award winner in DGS, just to say that we have two.
That's important.
Good afternoon. Marwan Karajat, Chief of Capital Projects Division.
Oh, so you're the capital guy. Okay.
You can't hide, Marwan. You can't hide.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Abrar Bhukdar, Chief of Fleet.
Thank you.
Julia Kalas, the Chief of Energy.
Hello.
Yes.
Abhaganap Beto, Deputy Chief for Fiscal Services.
Our wonderful CFO had his first baby, so he's out.
Congratulations, okay.
So we're gonna drag all of the fiscal questions are to our newly minted Deputy Chief, right? Hazing is okay.
So thank, thank you for that. We can all now place a face with a name and know how to.
Can I, can I do one, like, rise for my team? We will have a very diverse, wonderful team that are here.
Yeah. We understand the importance of support, so.
We do.
Yes.
And yesterday, there was a question, how well your city's agency represent the population of your city? I think our faces speak for themselves, so.
Yes.
In our leadership.
Thank you for that. That's important, that we can continue to place a face with a name and know how to do that outreach. And from that point, I'll take it back to the Chair for the rest of the council.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for this.
Vice President, I don't know what's going on. This is a very.
This is what happens.
You know, interesting day, but I support this. I support it. Okay. Not mad at all. Councilmember Gray.
It was something in the next phase, food, I think. First, first off, Director, I just wanna give a huge shout-out to your Wall Memorial Building Team. Last year, before I was councilperson, I was in another, I was in Councilor Burnett's office, and we hosted, or partly hosted, the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, like, resource fair citywide. And so it was over sixty vendors, and you guys made everything seem easier than what it actually was. Because we talked to Leslie and folks like that, and everything was like last minute, it was scrambling, and it was a lot going on, but you guys pulled it off and made it look easy.
Well-trained in last-minute actions.
Welcome to Baltimore. And, and so, yeah, I just wanna thank you for that. Also, just wanna give a big shout-out to Leslie Carter. She used to be the warden for us on the, on the fifth floor. And so, it's always great to see great talent and great people, also with Mr. Abu going over the DGS, some of your best and brightest over in DGS handling a lot of our everyday issues. And when it comes to Leslie, like, she's just always been there, and even when I lock myself out, I can like call her, which happens a lot. And, but also with community issues. So we had a question about West Baltimore Middle, and she just happened to be in the neighborhood, so she showed up to the meeting. I was not there. I'm happy she was, because she was able to answer a lot of questions with her institutional knowledge and understanding of what prior negotiations were with the RFPs, and was able to give levity to the situation. And so I just wanna publicly just say thank you for all you do and continue to do for the city of Baltimore. But shifting gears, I'm curious if you can give us a ballpark figure for how many vehicles are expected to be decommissioned FY twenty-five through twenty-eight? And I'm asking because I'm concerned on the rising costs from federal tariffs and just the uncertainty that just happens every day from our federal, I guess we can say, partners? And how that's gonna impact our ability to replace those vehicles in the near future? And are we preparing for those, those inflationary pressures now, especially when it comes to budgeting for fleet replacement?
Absolutely. And I think it would be safe to say, for except maybe one of our operations, is that everything that we're replacing with a new asset should be slated for decommission. So if I give you our replacement plan into the future, that should be also equal to the number of assets that will be decommissioned, except for the load packers. Because you heard the story that we were, we were overwhelmingly under the number of assets that are, that are needed. So, Abrar, do you have the numbers ready for the, the next multiple years of replacement, including? I know that we're getting two hundred and twenty-six assets this year. And I wanna take this opportunity to thank again the, the city administrator and the Budget Office to continue to increase the master lease funding for us to be able to replace these assets. We were stuck in a twenty-five million for ten years, and the asset prices went up, to your point, Councilman Gray, and we were able to adjust that number to upwards of thirty-four million dollars. And I believe we are at the thirty-seven, thirty-eight million dollars for master lease replacement, where we borrow and stretch our leverage dollars to buy more assets. You would say just like, how come you're spending thirty-eight million dollars and only getting two hundred and twenty-six assets? That's kind of the, the answer, because a couple of our assets are two, two million dollars each, some of them. But Abrar has the numbers for you.
Good afternoon. All right, so as far as the decommissioned assets, I would prefer that that and the asset count be an official committee request, please. And we'll provide that in like two business days.
Perfect. Yeah, so I just wanna make that a committee request, and I can repeat that. If we could get a number on how many vehicles are expected to be decommissioned FY twenty-five through FY twenty-eight?
And to address your concern as far as the tariffs go, so yes, there are some, some challenges with some of the recent tariffs, but what we've done over the last nine months is we actually created an intake shop. And what the intake shop does, it upfits vehicles after we receive them from manufacturers, so that it's our staff that's actually turning an Explorer into a police car. And so what that does is it makes us less reliant on parts that are coming from China and Mexico. And what, it allows us to be a little bit more creative, so we rely on some of our domestic OEM dealers to, to source those parts and to build those vehicles. So I hope that addressed the tariffs concern.
So we would, we can provide you, if, I mean, I assume this is gonna be a formal request, just like, what are plans for decommissioning for the next, next five years and through our replacement plan? But I would like you to keep it, that's a plan. Each year, we execute like the CIP. The first year of the plan is the actual, actual execution, the out-years, and we can plan it all the way up to ten years. We could see what, what will be taken off of the, the service, and we are able to provide that if, if this is.
Yeah, not, just FY twenty-five to twenty-eight.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do.
We can do that.
Thank you.
And just to add a little bit on Abrar's point, you may say just like, so what you're doing, the outfitting, and just like, how much is gonna save you? We usually, thirty to twenty percent of, of the actual asset value is in returning that SUV, Ford Explorer, to a unmarked police vehicle with the lights and everything. So, our master lease borrowing doesn't allow us to be able to purchase the, the things, the bells and whistles comes on the asset, because they, they're not collateral. They cannot be depreciated. So we purchase the asset itself through that, and then we spend our own money to, to bring it, bring it up to outfitting. Not relying on outside tariff burdened parts, and then relying on internal parts and stocking them, and then bringing in-house team, which is one of the things that we have already put in place to ensure that the spikes of the price is not gonna be as big as we expect. So that's our first line of defense.
Okay, thank you for that. And then lastly, I wanna jump, I wanna skip to the sustainability front. Have you all looked into the potential for a capital project focused on solar panels? I'm thinking not just in terms of reducing the city's utility costs, but also the possibility of generating revenue by selling the excess power back to BG&E, because we happen to have a city that's built for a million people with rooftops. And so with so many rooftops across the city, and especially, I mean, I'm sorry, city-owned buildings, this feels like a strong opportunity to move forward with our environmental goals. Is that something your team has explored? Or something you'll be open to exploring, the utilization of solar panels on city-owned buildings?
I have a question. Did Julia set you up for this question? Because she's, okay. Before I turn it over to Julia, and she can talk about all of the good work that we're doing, I, I wanna address one thing about the roofs. We studied the roofs, and she can speak better than I can. But individual roofs, unless they're collected under almost thirty-five thousand square foot of one roof, that the solar panel is not doable in terms of fiscal. But there are places that we have identified that meets the thirty-five thousand square feet minimum requirement, that we could put solar panels, and we use that for community solar. And we have an active project working with the DPW on the Reed Bird Wasteyard, and then building, and an RFP is gonna be out on that, and then we're working very closely with Director Zaid and his team. But other than that, that's just one solar project that we're working on. But there are many other ways to be able to retrofit and increase, increase the energy efficiency of, of our buildings and through grants, giving to the NGOs and other ones. But Julia, please, just, you know, fill in the gaps for me.
All right, thank you. So currently, we have a one-megawatt solar plant out at Back River and a ten-megawatt power purchase agreement that is in Hartford County, that is a virtual net metered solar agreement.
Just, just let's be, let's explain what a virtual net metering is. It's a wonderful thing that allows you to be able to build a solar farm in urban areas where you don't have the ability to build, but build it in an ag-driven area where you put that. But that, because the utility can know where your production comes in, so we can virtually net meter it, although the, the power itself doesn't come into the city's grid, but it still offsets and then gives us rebates and whatnot. So that allows us to be able to use a land that is not in our district, virtually net meter that for our production, to get the benefits of it. We speak in a lot of terms, but we just realize it's like not everybody is up to speed or not knowledgeable. But apologies for stopping you. Please go.
I always welcome it. So in terms of what else we are doing, we have looked at, we got technical assistance from Maryland Energy Administration. They looked at thirty city assets that we identified based on that list of larger roofs for the potential of solar development. That include city buildings, parking garages, parking lots. We also put out an RFI to the solar industry, looking at any. We also put out an RFI to the solar industry, looking at any vacant property in the city over eight acres as well as landfills, closed landfills. And again, the list of city buildings, asking for them, what business models would they propose for us to use this method? We took these results and we've been in talks, Director Attila mentioned, we've been working with DPW specifically looking at landfills. We also have a large grant we received from the state to develop solar, a solar project. We ran an RFP and we have a tentative award that we're finalizing the details are on for one of potentially two different closed landfill locations. That is the first step in the closed landfills. We're also in talks with DPW on looking at doing a much larger development using community solar. For those that may not be familiar, community solar is a structure within, that is allowed within the state in which the entity that owns the solar can sell to individual subscribers. And instead of providing our power purchase agreements, they tend to be fixed rates over time. A community solar deal basically says we will guarantee a five percent reduction compared to BGE over time. It's also in the state of Maryland, it has requirements in which there is low and moderate income subscribers. So some of the things we've been discussing is making sure that there's Baltimore city residents that would benefit from any community solar deal that we would do. So that is in initial statements. I'm looking forward to providing an update next year as that executes. And I will really depend, I think, on council. Because if we get one of these projects going, we'll want to make sure that we are getting the attention of this project in front of city residents to be able to subscribe, to save money on their bills.
And as you may know, that the city is part of the Brick Pack Cooperative and Julia Kayla sits there as our energies are on behalf of Adam Manny in terms of energy procurement. And we also work with the, the Brick Pack to ensure that eighty percent of, of our purchasing agreement is kind of fixed and hedged.
Correct. Yes, up to eighty-five percent of our electricity is purchased in hedges by about six months out. And then we buy back to, I think, twenty-four to thirty-six months, we'll buy energy out, allowing us to secure lower prices over time and more constant budgeting.
Well, yeah, that is really great to hear. And any support you guys need from us, just please let us know. Because this is something, especially with the, you know, global warming and everything that's happening. And of course, at BGE rates. This is something that we could really take advantage of and make sure that we give the relief that our, our constituents deserve. So thank you. And those are all my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
And I just wanted to explain why I asked for it to be a committee request. We're currently in the process of rightsizing our fleet. So the last thing I want to do is send you some numbers. And then next year when I come back, they don't necessarily align with where we're headed.
What rightsizing mean is we look at the agency's operations and then we, we have now telematics systems that allows us to be able to see how long and how far and when an asset has been driven. So we're trying to figure out those assets that are sitting idle, not being utilized and giving the agencies the chance to give up on that or explain themselves, why do they need that vehicle? So we might decommission more than we're, we're just buying because we just not buy and just retire. But the rightsizing can go the other way around. When we looked at the load packer operations and when we did the, the, the public safety with the, the medics and the ladder trucks, we realized that just like they needed to be right-sized up, meaning they needed more day-to-day. But we know that it's, it's a zero-sum game, a distribution of such things that we know that we're coming from a deficit culture when we didn't have enough maintenance dollars to replace assets. So the agencies are traumatized to give up any asset because they know that they were not getting anything. So now we have proven them that, that we are here. We're, we're going to give them the new assets. So we're going to go hard on underutilized, utilized assets to be retired because they are a burden. So we might have more decommissioned vehicles and we auctioned them off. And then sometimes we gave them to organizations like Vehicles for Change for them to use that car for two things. They train their individuals on how to be a mechanic on that car and then they fix that car and then give that car to a person that who might need to drive it to get a job. So we're very wonderful and happy with that organization. So we're trying to take some of them decommissioning to give into these NGOs and nonprofits.
As always, thank you for your thoroughness. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is very exciting about the community solar. So I, I know that we'll want to get further details as it keeps going. So that, that's great. I had, I also want to say thank you to Director and to your team. I, I think I mentioned it to you before, but I'm going to say it publicly. I was invited to a session at Mervo where some of your fleet folks were recruiting some of our students to be in an apprenticeship program to be mechanics for our fleet. And I remember, I think, three years ago in this room at this time saying, hey, you should go to Mervo and get some of our students to be, you know? And so I, I appreciate that. And I didn't, actually didn't realize that the program actually has been going for a long time. The person who was there, I believe his name is Mr. Wilson, was, is from Edmensen. And, and has participated in that program and is now, you know, really leading that charge. It was really great. And I think what was really great about it wasn't just the interaction with the student and the students that I saw, but also the fact that each one of the, of your DGS folks that was in the room said, you know, the city can't run without us. Which is actually a fact, right? I mean, if you can't, you can't pick up the trash without fleet. You can't, you know, go chase bad guys without, you know, the police car. You can't put out fires without like, that's a fact. And so the, the attitude there of we are so important to the rest of the city is really amazing. And I think it sort of is going through the, the culture of the, of the agency and is super helping with, you know, morale, with everything else. And that they believe so much in how important they are to the city, which we know they are. It's a fact. So I just want to say that was a great program. I really appreciated being invited to that. And I look forward to hearing, you know, more about, you know, our students getting involved because you need mechanics. I mean, three years ago, you needed forty-seven mechanics. So hopefully that number has gone down now. But I think that's, that's great. So I appreciate having the opportunity to, to be a part of that. I had a question about going back to some of the energy piece here. In Service seven thirty, you have internal service, right? And that I believe is you basically, there is work that you do for other agencies. So they are paying you for this work. Is that like the BGE bill or something? Because it seems like it's weird that it goes down, given that the rates are so high. What is that internal service happening with the energy performance there?
Well, thank you for that. Yes, Internal Service Fund is, is, is a chargeback model where we do the work for other agencies and then they pay the, the amount of work for administrative fee, either just like the people that are, the cost of people that are processing those invoices. But mainly we also pay the bills and charge the agencies for it. What we do is similar to a budget billing in, in BGE. Regardless of your actuels, we pay a certain dollar amount. So that's what we do with the agencies. The reason why we do that, we do not want the general funded agencies to be exposed to the changes in the spot market on that any given year. So we do an analysis the year before and say that based on actual, actual work and usage, we expect that your billing will be X next year. And coupled with that, our ability to hedge eighty-five percent of it through the six-month period, we could put a, a comfortable budget in the agencies. Then DGS receives the bills. The bills could be lower or higher than what it is. But what we committed to do is Internal Service Fund allows us to be like the, the Back River facility where the sewer system comes in to head works and then just pumps out. This is, so he keeps the, the bay clean. In this way, we're a clearinghouse. The money comes to us, we pay it, and then we, we charge the agency's budget that any given year, the Director Larson is not going to get a sticker shock, just like, okay, you told me that the cost is going to be twenty million dollars, you're charging thirty-five. What is happening here? So DGS's Internal Service Fund uses as a wave crasher there. So what we looked at it last year, and this is the, the full management of the total billing with all of his errors and then the accounts, when we looked at what's been budgeted versus what is being actually spent, we were able to identify about seven million dollar citywide cuts that the agencies do not have the budget for this fiscal year. Hoping that, I mean, we might need to pay at eight million dollars next year based on BGE. But the, today in this budget, we were very happy to be able to give the, the general funded agencies about six million dollars relief so that, that it could be diverted somewhere else. We could have taken the, the conservative route and say, you know what? That's too close to the bone. Let's not cut it. But because we don't do a spot market fluctuation for all of the good work that we do, we are able to absorb if any kind of hit comes in. That allows us this. Let's say that we brought from the agency's total of twenty million dollars. Internal Service Fund, let's get charged eighteen, eighteen million dollars that year. That's the two million dollars that we have. Next year, we project that the budget needs to be twenty-two million dollars. We can hold the budget flat, twenty, and use our two million dollars back in that. That's why Internal Service Funds really works and our hedging strategy and all of the, the retrofits that we're doing, it helps us. So don't please take the six million dollars of continuation into each year, but next, this FY twenty-six, we're confident that we could, we could save.
Yeah, I just, because the bills are going up for everybody in terms of electric until we get community solar and until you're working on more of the energy star that you talked about earlier, where there's efficiencies in our, in our buildings. I just thought it was interesting that it was down instead of up like for everybody else. But I understand what your, what the math looks like in terms of trying to do that. But hopefully that number actually is going down with all of your efforts in terms of energy efficiency.
Absolutely.
With all of our buildings.
And it's also education. It's not, building can be efficient, but it's not going to be efficient if you keep the lights on twenty-four seven.
Sure, right, exactly. Yeah. Well, ours, our offices, they, the light comes off after we leave for a while. So those are kinds of.
Like small projects, like I know Julia's team's working on films that would reflect light because window replacement is an extremely expensive capital project on ceremonial historical buildings. You can't just replace them. It's millions of dollars.
Right, that's a story.
Believe it or not, energy, you lose a lot through, through the windows. But now we're testing, we actually have a room for these window film testing. We, we commissioned a test room and then we do different types of things, just like.
You can use my office to test, actually, because I have an external window.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. But these are, these are small interventions that we're trying to work that, that does not require a lot of, a lot of dollars that will improve results. But one of the things that we're also looking into is the term is energy savings contracts. So where you utilize private dollars so that you don't have to borrow and you go with an entity that they would then commission a, a system, they would take on the capital loan. They would do the work. They would finance it, amortize over a period of time. In that period of time, you hope to pay it back through, not hundred percent, but most of it through the, the reduction in the maintenance and repair cost as well as the kilowatt hours saved. So that allows us to maybe be able to do a twenty million dollars worth of window replacement that does not go against the geo-borrowing, that we don't have to come up with PEGO, but we may have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar annual payment, hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars of which could come from the savings that is generated. So my office, Energy Office is looking into these types of strategies. We want to be ahead of these types of things.
Yeah, no, it's definitely taking some creative financing, but it looks like you're really working on trying to figure this out. Because there is, I mean, this is city hall, it's always going to be here, you know, we have to maintain it and is one of the examples of.
And city has done these types of contracts in the past and we, we have an active muscle. We've learned our mistakes from the past and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do it and we're gonna do it better.
My second question was sticking with our buildings. You had said earlier about our needing to reduce our square footage in terms of our assets in order to make sure that with deferred maintenance, we're actually able to do more with less, right? We have, you know, fewer, fewer buildings to maintain. So I know that you came to us a couple of years ago saying the same thing. And so I was curious as to where we are. Are there some assets that you're selling? Are we doing something differently? You know, where, where are we in that reduction of the, of the, you know, square footage? I mean, there, again, we're always going to keep city halls. City Hall is not one of the ones we're going to get rid of. But like, there's might be some others that you're thinking about? What does that look like?
So we're, we're analyzing the current downtown footprint. And one, one of the easiest solutions is if we understand how we use our space, the, the, the lowest hanging fruit would be that how many agencies are out there in private leases? That we may be able to bring them in if we can use our space better. So again, rightsizing is the right word. We, we, we might keep the square footage the same, but utilize the square footage better. So that's one thing. The other thing that what we're doing is, over the, the last year, we talked about this till now, we've done three major steps. One, the city never had a, what I consider a space playbook that standardizes what a space should look like. And now we have very defined space, like the GOA or GSA federal standards that tells us just if you're in an office and you have an executive, this is the size of the office you should have. This is what you need to do. So now we develop those standards. The second one is based on those standards, we have a, we created a space allocation model that it's basically an intake conversation. Councilwoman Ramos, if you tell me that you need a new space, we would come to you, we'd do an interview and ask you questions. How many people do you have? What kind of space do you need? Do they work remotely? Do they need a closed office? Can it be a shared office? That it creates a blueprint for us. Signed and sealed between you and I, that if you need to move from this space to any other space, that this is the space you need to have and these are the standards. So now that we have two of them, we could estimate scenarios like if we were to leave a building that we're spending this much because we now know that building's capital obligation through VFA. We know how much money we spend. We know how much square footage it could be saved if you were to take everybody out of this building into another building. And then we could, our real estate office can look at the market because we have subscriptions like, systems like CoStar is like a commercial Zillow. We could, we could figure out if you were to go to a private space, how much money we should be able to spend and provide recommendations to the Planning Commission, Planning Department, Mr. Mayor, Madam CAO to say, here are our analysis on a said building and this is our recommendation. In order for us to stay in this building over the next ten years, this is the, the capital improvement and an operating cost needed if we don't do anything. If you were to improve the space, this is how much money we need to spend. As opposed to if we sell it, this is how much money we can get it. If it's developed, we might, this is how much tax revenue can come back from it. One-time sales proceeds. And if you were to take everybody out, where do we place them? Do we place them in one place? Do we put them into the neighborhood organizations? And what that operating cost should look like, which would be a direct input into the ten-year financial planning so that they can figure out whether to invest more in capital on a said building or, or in, or in leases. We don't have a specific decision on any, any building, but we're geared up to support the ten-year financial planning in these types of calculations. So we can give them hardcoded numbers. I do want to shout out our partners in this crime, MOID and Comptroller's Office, Department of Real Estate, Deputy Mayor Williams's office, as well as BDC have been working very closely with us to develop these. So I think, I feel very comfortable, next years, we're going to speed up in decision-making. Without this body of work, I think it would be premature and we wouldn't have known whether or not the, the deal makes financial sense. But as you know, Councilwoman, not everything is a financial discussion. There's like a political aspect, ceremonial aspects. But we, as the data collectors, we call ours as the Department of Generic Services. We do everything in between. We have provided an information so the decision-makers as a collective can, can analyze and make the best decision for themselves.
Okay, because a few years ago, it seemed like the, the decisions on these buildings were going to be piecemeal, but it sounds like you've sort of held that off and are trying to look at it holistically in terms of, as we look at the ten-year financial plan, but also just in general, like if we have to get rid of one building and lease another, what does that, what does that actually look like? But in a holistic way and not just like building by building.
I think I would say do it right rather than right now is, is the attitude. Because I think looking at a ten-year span is a wonderful thing. Because if you look at deal on itself, first year may not be lucrative. But if you overlook the ten-year span, all of us, and then just like leaving this building or investing in a building may look better if you amortize the cost over ten years. And then these buildings should not be looked at, how much is costing us or can be sold this? But we do have, I can't, that's not my place to share, but we have a couple identified buildings that we're actively trying to, to shed.
Yeah, there may be some emergent issues that have to be dealt with. Sure. Okay. Well, thanks for that explanation. That's helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Councilman Gray asked my questions already. Thank you.
Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, friends from DGS for being here. One particular, two questions related to fleet management. One particular question related to some change in positions. The footnote there at the bottom of one, Service one eighty-nine, the, the position changes there in fleet management. I just want to make sure I understand what's happening there in the. I just want to make sure I understand what's happening there and the potential impact of that. I see, and it tracks with some other agencies that were here yesterday and kind of, I've, I've seen like a general move from like what I've described as like frontline service providers to administrative positions. It seems like something that's happening in different places and maybe that's not what's going on here. I see six positions moving purchasing assistants fiscal supervisor to administration and then abolishing, uh, six positions, five labors, one tire maintenance worker, creating two deputy chiefs and, um, creating three new positions, but those three new positions aren't scoped out. So my main question is, feel free to explain any of that movement, but in particular, what are the new positions and what's the impact on, um, the ability to actually maintain the fleet day to day? I mean, this, this seems, you know, the, the six workers, the five labors and one tire maintenance seem like frontline staff that are probably doing really important work on the vehicles every day. And so is that changing?
I'll, I'll take the first cut and then S M E of our will, will, will talk. So, um, there are two things, two things happening in, in fleet. One, once Chief Abrah came to me with a, a, a new org chart of leading the organization. And my CFO at the same time came to me and said, we're very distributed in terms of our, um, accounts, accounts management, in terms of our payables, um, because two-hundred-and-fifty people sits in different locations and we're trying to centrally pay the, the invoices and whatnot. We have decided that A P, accounts payable, to be able to meet ninety-eight percent paid on time, I just want to say it again, that it need to be centralized. So what we did is we took Abrah's dedicated positions that who does actual payroll out of his shop, moved him to the director's office. So that's one move. Then the other move is Abrah came to me with a, a leadership restructuring to ensure that we have an assigned personnel for Z E V management. That's the new, the Councilman Conway knows that we need to be there by two-hundred-and-twenty, so we can't just like really nearly deal with that. So we need to create a, create an arm. We need to, to focus on more safety. We need to focus on employee, uh, maintenance and operations. So, uh, it may look like we're taking positions that are, um, that are frontline. On its face, it is true, but if you look at our vacancy rates and how long these positions have been vacant and our inability to fix them, we collectively decided that we're not going to be in a position, all of us, and you're going to fill up that forty-six mechanics and you need that forty-seventh so that you cannot use that to reclass a couple of them to get to the salaries to be able to create a chief position. So we looked at historic vacancies and we felt very comfortable that taking these frontline positions that have been sitting idle could be used more appropriately for creating the positions to, to set up him for success. When he presented the, the chart that you're looking at, I, I was very impressed with his, with his vision and I supported it. And since then, um, Shanae, uh, our interim, right? Uh, and she's, she's been tasked with doing all kinds of improvements in our fleet substations. Meaning, like after we've, we've, I, I've toured with you all, the solid, solid waste facilities. And I didn't want to have a tour with you and then look at the facilities that we looked at that way. No offense to D P W, it would be embarrassing for a D G S director who is in charge of the facilities to have facilities that are not in good shape. And it was quite important for me to push Abrah to ensure that we are providing our employees with a good working condition places and training. All kinds of things that we didn't have positions that we could give the leadership to. Now, because of these positions and movements, we have a leader and then she actually took me to a tour yesterday. They forced me, me and the deputy, to say, you have to come and see so that you can speak intelligently of the work that we have done. They have laminated before and after pictures of the, the spaces. And right now, I'm very proud to see literally all of their lunchrooms, all, all of their, uh, locker rooms are just like really upgraded and done. And that's, that only can happen because we have a dedicated person in the leadership team under Abrah can take on that, very competent. But we wouldn't be able to do it if we didn't take a couple of long-term vacancy positions. I hope that, that addresses your question.
Yeah, that's helpful. I think it covers almost everything. Uh, just the, the three new positions this has created, just if you list off what those are.
So one of them is an operations officer, one position that's going to be our training, our first ever training supervisor, and then the other two are two laborer positions. But Director, if I may add to his first question. So yes, it was a difficult decision, obviously, to, to reclass the five laborer, um, positions, but they were vacant. Um, and I had no other choice. Uh, as far as the tire maintenance worker position that we reclassed, we were going to reclass that one way or another because there is no growth with that role. This is an individual that will spend his or her entire life just working on tires. And that's not something that I want in my division. I need people to be able to develop new skills, go from a tire maintenance worker to a technician, hopefully to a supervisor. So that was the reasoning behind the tire maintenance worker position. But you have the org, org chart. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you. The second question on the fleet side has, has to do with, um, in particular, purchasing of emergency vehicles, whether that's ambulances, fire trucks, things like that. Obviously, it's been, the, the inflation in that and the delays in that have been, uh, well-covered nationally and certainly locally here. Um, what are we seeing? I know we've had, taken delivery of some, some nice, uh, nice new apparatus recently. What have you seen in terms of changing? Is, is, is cost selling down? Is delivery time settling down? Are we still seeing challenges there? And there's been some rumblings around the possibility for, for legal action more broadly, antitrust, things like that, which I know is, you know, that's, that's back to legal who was here a minute ago. But just any, any updates on that front? What are we seeing when it comes to those, those big-ticket emergency vehicles?
As Abrah is gearing, I'm not going to even attempt to answer that question while he's sitting there because he has all the answers for you.
Thank you. So yes, we are seeing an increase. So just to give you some examples, for fire engines in F Y twenty-four, they were going for, uh, just over a million dollars. In F Y twenty-five, we're at one-point-seven. Um, and then for F Y twenty-six, we're expecting it to be just under one-point-nine. So we're definitely seeing, um, an increase there for apparatus across the board. You asked another.
Uh, timing, delivery timing on those?
So delivery timing is, uh.
Normalizing.
Is, is somewhat, somewhat, uh, normal, uh, not necessarily pre-COVID, um, delivery times, but we're at two-point-five to, to, to three years for anything from engines to ladder trucks to, to medics. And it just depends on the size of the order, where we are, um, with, with manufacturers and our build slots. So there's a lot of different factors that play into that. But we do a really good job to kind of get ahead of other jurisdictions and, and use whatever leverage we do have.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we do have a, we do have leverage with our vendors because we, we, our purchasing power speaks for itself, so we can, we can use that.
Great.
Councilman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say congratulations, Director, on putting together an all-star team, a great team where, um, people feel proud, uh, you know, work for the city in, in a culture where people are just looking to get stuff done, you know, and be effective. And, uh, just want to also take this chance, take, to take this opportunity, shout out Leslie Carter. Thank you for always being there and so, and whenever my office need anything, the help making it happen, whether it's directly something you need, that's your responsibility, but at least point me in the right direction. So I, I appreciate that and also want to shout out, uh, Ms. Young, Carol Young. Congratulations on receiving the, uh, Richard Ledensky Award. Thank you, yes. The, the award for excellence in public service and that's a representation of your department where I feel like D G S stands for doing good stuff. You would say doing, doing, doing good stuff.
Delivering great service.
Yeah, delivering great service. You know what? That, that, that's a good one too. That's a good one too. Um, but I, it's this kind of question that I asked during the, uh, capital budget and I'll ask you all as well. And yesterday, the, um, uh, the C A O, she mentioned agencies not moving in a deficit mindset and making sure they have everything they need. And, and I'm kind of hearing about the deferred maintenance i- issue. Just want to have a conversation around, um, uh, the deferred maintenance backlog. You feel like it's growing faster than the repairs? And is there enough funds to actually get ahead of it eventually? I know there's things that like ARPA might have came and helped the, put a dent into it, but ARPA funds, you know, may not happen again in the future. Uh, just kind of looking at the amount of funds that's available to handle the backlog of deferred maintenance on an annual basis. You feel like it's enough in order for us to get in front of this stuff? And if, yeah, just you can start there.
I'll just be very honest that it is not enough. But I don't think it's D G S's fault or this administration's or the planning department's fault. We let this go deteriorate so far to a billion-dollar mark that no amount of borrowing, we can't even imagine that level of borrowing anyways, we'll, we'll fix, fix the problem. So we need to be creative. We need, we need, and what they're putting in place this year is allowing us to, to be able to do that. ARPA was extremely helpful. I'm not going to deny that. That bought us some time, uh, enabled us to be able to do things that we would have to wait for years. We would have never been able to prioritize those projects because we would have to carry water to the burning fires. An increase of forty to forty-five percent of the geo borrowing in the city and maintaining into the future is going to absolutely help. But it is not going to be enough to get ahead. So big job for us. If you look at our, um, capital spend in the, our years, we have more money coming our way than we had received in the past, so we're very excited about it. Also a little bit scared because there's more work for us and we need to be set up appropriately to be able to execute those projects. But that's a good challenge to deal with. It all goes back to this right sizing conversation that we had. Because Director Ryer and I, when we met, we discussed that bringing more money is just not the right solution. We need to, to compress it from both ends. We need to be very cognizant and transparent about the space that we use and we need to look into alternative ways of using that space. We know that there are valuable buildings to the developers that we may occupy right now and it will be cheaper for us to, to maybe leave those buildings and, um, do leasing like the State Department did. And then you don't need to look too far. If you look at the, the Maryland state operations in the city, they, they are leaving most of their buildings and then they go on to lease because they also did let the buildings get to a degree that is super deteriorated. We're not at that moment to decide building by building, but it is going to extremely help. Let's take one of those buildings that say that is in the F C I range of sixty percent and above, which has a future capital backlog of sixty million dollars. If we don't do that, we will free up future sixty million dollars to go to other, other places. And then we could sell that building and then we could take one-time sales proceeds. And if a developer develops it, we may get tax revenue. Moving it from a balance sheet to a tax roll would be helpful. So ten-year financial plan is where is our, uh, salvation going to be? Working with that group and reimagining our footprint while continuing to increase our, our slice of the pie, but not just our slice, but the pie itself, as we did this year, at least maintain it. And, um, our ability to be able to do one-time projects is going to keep the cost of those projects lower so we could optimize the dollars more efficiently. As you can imagine, if we stretch a construction project over three years, the cost is going to go up. And if this is the year one, two, three of this period, costs are going to go up significantly. So we can lock the bids now and then do full projects. So we're doing one, using our money efficiently. We're looking at ways to, to reduce our square footage, so that our obligation, and continuing to increase the monies that we get. If we do, keep doing those three things, I think we've set up ourselves in a good way to deal with that deferred maintenance backlog, but we cannot be ahead of it.
Yeah, thank you. And I would say, once you're done reimagining that footprint, I would encourage looking at alternative funding sources to, because there's a lot of creative ways, I've noticed, other cities have been using to get ahead of that deferred maintenance backlog and actually saving the money on the long end. But yes, that's a, that's a wonderful way. Look forward to working with you all, making it happen. And thank you all, you and your team, for, for being supportive. Thank you. All the great work.
Councilman Conway?
How's it going, Director?
Doing great, sir. How are you?
Good to see. I'm going to, um, lay on some more praise for you and your amazing team. I think it's sometimes difficult for leaders of our agencies to see opportunities with sometimes the flood of problems that hit you in your seat. And so I, I want to, um, thank you for all the great work that you guys are doing and even more the sort of forward-thinking work that you're doing with regard to E V vehicles, with regard to clean energy, with regard to, uh, operations and otherwise. I think, um, that, that's, that's really what we want to see. And I think the commitment that your team has brought to the, to the table has been truly inspiring. I work with all you guys in some way, shape or form in, in various capacities, Julia, Marwan. Otherwise, I mean, I've, I've, you know, met and worked with all of you and so I'm really proud to hear some of the progress that we're making and want to continue to, um, support and be a partner. I really want to give you guys praise. I'll ask a question because I feel like it's a necessity and, and maybe, maybe another opportunity. One of the things that you and I have sort of dreamed about, um, in passing as we see each other in the garage, um, has been an idea around integrating energy, storage, our vehicles and efficiency with city buildings. And the idea, um, I, I learned recently, it kind of is summed up in the idea of a virtual power plant. Essentially, what you're able to do is, um, have, and I'm sure Julia knows this very well. You want to jump in, Julia, or? So the idea is quite simple, or maybe not that simple, but, um, you're able to use solar or any other ways of creating energy. That solar can then go to storage, um, for community solar programs. That can immediately go back onto the grid, but there are, um, scenarios by which, uh, we can fine-tune and sort of negotiate when we do and don't want to, um, contribute to the grid. What it would allow us to do is to reduce our energy usage and our reliance on the grid, especially as, uh, energy costs go up. And I think there's also, um, to the community solar idea, a prospect of helping with affordability, uh, in areas around the city as we see energy prices go up. So, um, not, not much for you necessarily to answer now. Maybe something, this is something we can discuss later. But I see various components coming together, that being solar projects, that being, uh, a fully electric fleet, um, that being upgrades to our buildings and, um, you know, I, I'm finding opportunities to do solar, um, on buildings and on vacant lots across the city. There's an opportunity for us to integrate all those systems together in a way that could reduce energy usage by the city, maybe save us money, and also potentially provide a, a resource to Baltimoreans across the city. So I put that out there as an idea to chew on. It's one that I've been chewing on for months now and, uh, I would love to be able to explore that with you as we think about big ideas and opportunities in the future, despite all the daily challenges that you guys face.
Well, that's the reason why we have Julia's office, to be able to work on big ideas. And she has a team, fully staffed, by the way, no vacancies in her shop. She, she attracts and trains and retains them. So we're very grateful, Julia, for that team and, um, just, uh, I, I'm not very familiar with the concept. Julia probably is, but my commitment is we would like to work with you because anything that we could do, even if it's not going to save money, if it could keep the costs under control and create working environment that requires less corrective maintenance, we're, we're up for it.
Awesome.
Julia, do you want to add anything? And Marwan, you, first Julia, then you?
Thank you, thank you for the question. It's, it's definitely something we've been thinking about. As part of doing the R F I that we did was to consider the benefit of solar for city assets and those potentials versus the benefit of community solar and trying to be able to communicate between agencies with sustainability, with planning, with the capital divisions, like what are your options? And that's what we've been focused on and we're really looking forward, hopefully this year, moving from options to execution. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd love to explore that more with you.
Well, I, first I would like to thank everyone who brought the sustainability as a subject for discussion here. I think we should also, before we even explore the option of generating onsite energy, making these facilities are energy efficient. Because this is the best way to save energy and to be sustainable, is to make your building, um, energy efficient, use the most efficient system, change your blacktop roofs to white roof, reducing the heat island. I don't know if you are aware of the, the, the temperature increase caused by black tar and rooftops is about five degrees difference between.
I passed the bill on that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So the good thing about, despite the small budget that D G S receive every year, which is about sixteen to seventeen million dollar, most of our contribution to these buildings goes toward roofs and H VAC system. And every roof we replace, we'll make sure it's a white top roof to, so we can reduce the heat island impact. And also, most of our mechanical system, energy systems, when we replace them, we'll make sure that we do the analysis and get the most efficient system so we can reduce first our energy bill and second, contribute to sustainability and reduce the heat island and the impact on the environment. and reduce the heat island and the impact on the environment and carbon footprint. So I just want to add this to your uh, your concerns that we are aware of it and we are promoting it, promoting it, and we fully support that. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you guys. You got a brilliant team. Um, we're really, the city's lucky to have all you guys and I'm, I'm proud to have the opportunity to work with you. And I, I appreciate all the additional work you guys to do, to, to think big and to solve big problems because we can play small every day, but if we can solve some of these big problems, it could be a real opportunity for the city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Councilman Conway, I would like to say that uh, the STAT program, DGS has already started internally and we have been giving the uh, green light to do it in-house because we are the first ones to do it. So we don't have to carry ourselves to the city STAT room. City STAT folks come to our meetings to see how we run them. Um, this is a grueling session for our chiefs. They can, they can probably, they, they're nodding, they're nodding. Uh, so, again, data is part of our DNA, you, you and I. We've worked in this together in the past and we know that we want to move from measurement to management. We just don't want to look, oh, what just happened? We want to be, influence everything as the, as close to as happening and influence management decisions that whether that be energy, whether that be hiring or, or corrective maintenance. Um, we're pushing for transparency and real-time data as possible. I just wanted to let you know because that's your bill for, for the STAT.
Thank you. Good to hear it.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, back to fleet real quick. Uh, I have been enjoying your recruitment videos um, featuring members of our community that are uh, in our uh, fleet positions. So thank you very much for those. I think um, highlighting all the um, people who are uh, working for DGS is important. Um, obviously you're working with our Latino community as well, so I'm grateful for that. I think those videos are amazing. So thanks for that. I appreciate it. Um, the other question that I had was um, around the um, we, on service 731, uh, there are three new positions, building repairs and a building manager. Is that for the current um, uh, buildings for, that we're currently occupying? Or are those for the, the buildings that are just sitting, that are still in our inventory? Uh, because you know, we still have that challenge with, you know, security of some of those buildings.
That, that's our current portfolio of vacant, vacant positions. Um, I can't remember at the top of my head where we used, uh, Bogun, do you know where we, we classed them? The building repairs to create? One thing that I know, um, Councilwoman Ramos is, well, we wanted to create a, a stronger safety office and it, in our buildings. Uh, because the city is leaning on more, more safety. And we know that we are somewhat reactive, not proactive. So we wanted to have um, a, a group of individuals that are focused directly on safety, not just facilities, safety. Um, this, this includes proactive inspections on ADA issues or any kind of hazards, uh, MSHA or OSHA standards. So I, I believe we have taken steps to create um, positions to, to build a similar safety office that DPW has created for themselves. And again, the same way, we're taking our long-term underutilized vacant positions. And I want you to also do understand that it's not the lack of trying to hire to these positions. It's just like not being able to attract to these salaries to those positions. So, at the same time, I'm also very grateful that the salary study is being implemented to, to give us more ability to fight for these, these trade positions. But the beginning of this planning year, we wanted to put a lot of focus on safety with our facilities and we realized that we have emergency personnel, that EOC-driven, they staff. But we don't have proactive safety group that works with the risk management to ensure. So our positions are being reclassed to, to support those initiatives.
Okay, so that, that's kind of, that was like a part two. So um, you, it sounds like you've been doing throughout the agency, looking at your um, your vacant positions that you haven't been able to hire and trying to figure out what your needs are to then reclass.
That is correct.
And you've been proactive in that regard. So that's great. Uh, the, the specific question was this two building repairers and building managers. So that's part of this team that's really looking at what's happening in each of the buildings um, to make sure that it's ADA compliant, there's, you know, um, OSHA and MSHA, whatever other standards are met in those buildings? Okay, because I, I'm still interested in the sort of set of buildings that are just sitting there. Um, and uh, we want to make sure that those are also um, safe for the community and that.
Are you referring to surplus school buildings specifically? Yes.
Yeah. So what's the, is that, so that, that, this group is not for that? There's another group of people that are working on the surplus?
Yeah, so uh, we, we're not blessed enough to be able to have building to, to public, like a maintenance ratios to being one-on-one. I mean, obviously City Hall has more dedicated personnel than some other locations, but the rest is more like a uh, one too many. Uh, we would like to be at that staffing level that we have a building maintenance coordinator and a laborer and whatnot, a certain per-square-footage ratios, which BOMA defines how many you should have. If you have this level of portfolio, complexity of portfolio, what kind of staffing model do you need? We're severely under that. So what we do is we, we do a portfolio assignment. Uh, outside of the multiple buildings that are in heavy use, like the police department, the Benton, the, the City Hall, where we have very dedicated personnel um, for the use and then the, the uh, level of exposure, the remaining crew are portfolio-style management, which includes the surplus schools. But specifically in the surplus schools um, space, what we're doing is um, our pilot program, if you remember last year, we talked about two things. We're, we're including um, this, this system called DAWGS, um, like a much more secure, like unbreakable, but they've managed to break into that too. But much more deterrent system than the, the regular boarding. And we have deployed um, cameras that are smart but maintained by actual individual. So um, the efforts around that is if the cameras detect an activity, that would then um, notify an individual. That individual put eyes on it, then decides whether illegal activity or somebody just passing by, like your Ring camera. I mean, it will, it'll let you know like a cat or, or a person walking their dog or someone trying to break in. Then they would be able to call 911 directly to, to dispose and dispatch and they would call us. So between the deterring and deployment of the cameras, we, we, we believe that we could do more with less. And um, we have response teams. We get requests about illegal dumping. We, we get, we had a, a school fire recently ha- happened. And then that was a stark number when, when I asked my team to pull me the numbers to see, give me the incidents happening in the, the pilot buildings versus the buildings that don't have these systems. It's quite stark, the number of incidents that are much more. So, this year's budget, I think the contract's gonna be in place to allow us to deploy those to our 17-plus uh, schools and then more coming. And that way, we, we truly believe that we could do more with less.
That makes sense. I'm glad you're thinking about other ways to secure those buildings because it's hard to have people around all the time, which is what you're, you're trying to do with the buildings that are actually used. Um, so that, that's good. I um, don't have a surplus school in my district anymore, but um, well, I do, but it's owned by another entity right now. Uh, so, and they're using the same types of technology to try to secure that building. It's very challenging.
That, that is a very challenging building.
Yeah, it's got a 50 doors. I mean, it's um, crazy.
I mean, you, you remember our conversations.
I've broken into it actually. Um, so there's uh, there's, you know, so that's a big, that's a big job. So I, I very much appreciate the creativity you're trying to get to, what you need in terms of utilizing those vacant positions, but then also thinking about this other piece um, as well. So thank you, Madam Chair. I'm good now.
Thank you. Thanks President Middleton.
Just a quick question back to the solar. So um, in Park Heights, we had a ribbon-cutting of a um, apartment building right at the corner of Park Heights Avenue and Woodland, across the street from the soon-to-be new Park Heights Library. And they have the very first solar parking lot. And I think it's the first in the entire city, if I'm not mistaken, which you should really check out because it's um, really neat. Um, because I know you do things with libraries, are you involved with the build, the soon-to-be building of that library?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so when you mentioned white roof, I'm like, oh, this would go really nice with, because I know there's going to be green stuff and all those pieces of the puzzle with this library. So, yes.
Indeed, Councilwoman Middleton. So the uh, will, will, the sustainability is part of the design. Um, selecting the right material, not just even for the roof, even for the interior. Um, so of the building, it's been a, a subject for discussion with the architectural designer on this matter. Um, so, we will explore the option. Again, they, with solar, we want to make sure that the economics works. And if uh, if it does work, uh, we always can add solars to the parking lot um, and make it covered. Uh, we'll work closely with energy. I mean, we could think they are part of our department. So that's the connection that we could uh, always explore the option. We did explore it before. I don't know if you are aware or not. DGS built the first solar project for the city about six years ago. It's one megawatt at Back River. Um, so we did implement one megawatt of solar. It's a uh, ground mount and it's been doing great. Uh, Julia can speak to the details about the benefits of the system between selling the solar renewable energy credit as a second revenue in addition to the energy that we're saving um, and using onsite.
And I know the Forest Park Library is being renovated. Is it any, are any changes included?
With Forest Park Library, it's a little bit challenging because we're not replacing the main systems of the building. We're adding a small addition and most of the work has been done, isn't interior uh, alteration and improvement to the site. Um, again, if the parking lot allow uh, for a separate structure for solar and again, funding is available, certainly we can explore that. Um, I heard that the library also been allowing charging station on their sites to promote electric vehicles. Um, we did work with them. Certainly, this was not the work done with us, but we give them some advice. We were replacing the HVAC system. We noticed a couple of things and we advised about a couple of things, how this should be uh, promoted and continue to be uh, provided as a service for the customers. Um, so unfortunately, again, with Forest Park, it's not gonna be an option here because of the limited scope. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
But we are doing ARPA renovated renovations to HVAC systems to six libraries that is gonna im- impact their energy usage. Maybe not solar, but improving their resiliency. That's exactly right. And that's to the point we raised earlier. Most of our HVAC system being replaced with energy-efficient system. They call them in the industry variable refrigerant flow. And it is the most uh, sustainable and efficient uh, heating and cooling system uh, that allow you uh, to basically, if, if you have cooling uh, demand in one room for 70 degree and the other room for 72, um, but there is extra load on that room. Instead of running the refrigerant, you may extract some of the heating or cooling load from that room. What it doesn't need that load goes toward the room that it needs the load. And it does also allow us to take advantage of the utility rebate, part of Empower Maryland account. Uh, this systems allow us to claim 75% um, of the cost difference between a traditional heat pump system and variable refrigerant flow system. So there's a great advantage for promoting uh, and using this system, even through uh, Empower Maryland, the utilities are promoting, the Public Service Commission is supporting this program initiative. And we're taking fully advantage, we're taking the full advantage of this system by capturing the rebate.
Sounds like something we need in this building.
This building is very challenging. And can I say? It is. But you are right. Sorry for interruption. It is on the request, um, in the, in the six-year request that we are actually currently exploring uh, or implementing a, 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 an assessment to the building system that includes mechanical and electrical. Um, and in outer years, we're asking for funding to replace the HVAC and the electrical system in this building.
That's good to know. We spend a lot of time in here.
Unfortunately, during construction, you will not be, so that's one of the challenges. So I, I also want to mention that we are investing in um, smart building automation systems. We were given enhancement funding last year to implement a pilot project to see um, how smart building uh, automation systems can be helpful because they are able to figure out um, if one unit is down and the other unit is overworking. You, we currently know that both systems are down because one is down and the other one is overworking. Now both are down and somebody calls us, it's very hot in here. Now it's a corrective maintenance problem that is gonna take many days to fix. So we're not gonna meet our target on that. But the building automation systems that we're gonna pilot will allow us to, give us insights of something that is about to happen, almost like a, think about driving your car without a dashboard and you're running out of fuel and you only figure out when you ran out of fuel. This case, uh, these smart systems will, will tell us uh, diagnosis of early detection that we could intervene and we could solve the problems before they become costly and then time-consuming. So that's the next phase. But these, um, we, we have, that work is gonna take a minute. So um, hopefully, if I'm around next year or the following year, I will be able to speak to its benefits once we've implemented.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you to the Director and your entire team for joining us today. We are going to go into a brief recess. We will be back at 4:30 for BMZA.